I would like to call to order this public hearing, this second reading of the 2025 Pownell Town Warrant. We've made a few corrections and additions, and without further ado, we're going to repeat our first public hearing performance, but we have a guest star, which would be our, hopefully, John Moderator, Mr. Chesney. So Bo, you're up.
Thank you, John. Bo Chesney from Lawrence Road. Would you like me to just read the whole thing right from the beginning? Okay. 2025 Pownell Town Warrant to Kathleen Hoag, a resident of the town of Pownell, Cumberland County, State of Maine. Greetings in the name of State of Maine. You are hereby required to notify and warn the inhabitants of the town of Pownell and said county and state qualified by law to vote in town affairs to assemble at Mallet Hall, 429 Halliwell Road, Pownell, Maine on Tuesday, June 10, 2025, at 7:45 a.m., then and there to act upon Article 1 and by secret ballot on Articles 2 through 4 set forth below. The polls will be open between 8 a.m. and 8 p.m. And to notify and warn the inhabitants of the town of Pownell qualified by law to vote in town offices, in town affairs, to assemble at Pownell Elementary School at 587 Elmwood Road, Pownell, Maine 04069. Alternate location, Mallet Hall, 429 Halliwell Road, Pownell, Maine, on Monday, June 23, 2025, at 7 p.m. to act upon the remaining articles, 5 through 38, as set forth in this warrant. Article 1, to choose a moderator to preside at said meeting. Article 2, to elect by secret ballot the following officers: one select board assessor for a three-year term, one cemetery commissioner for a three-year term, one RSU number five board of directors for a three-year term. Article 3, to, shall the municipality authorize the state to permit the sale of spirits for off-premises consumption on days other than Sunday? Article 4, shall this municipality authorize the state to permit the sale of spirits for off-premises consumption on Sundays? Any questions there? Article 5, related to ordinances, shall an ordinance entitled 2025 Amendments to the Zoning Ordinance of the Town of Pownell, Maine regarding Section 100 General be enacted? The proposed ordinance is available for review and inspection of the town offices and will be available at the town meeting. There's an Exhibit A. These are, these are, these are changes to the ordinance?
Changes to the land use ordinance.
Okay.
Okay.
See, I bow in, 115 Royal Road. On the definition for dwelling units, I'm wondering whether it should read on the second, oh, I'm sorry, 17, page 17. I'm wondering whether it should read sleeping facilities for one or two families since below it, there's a single family and two family dwelling.
That would be a two-unit, basically. No.
So under dwelling unit, the definition reads living, sanitary, and sleeping facilities for one family, but underneath it says a single-family dwelling and a two-family dwelling. So should that read one or two families in the definition?
If you look above, a dwelling is a building designed or used as the living quarters for one or more families. A dwelling unit, so if you get a two-family house, one side is one unit, one side is another unit.
All right, I understand. So a dwelling unit has just one family.
Right.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
But units is the key, the key factor.
Right, thank you.
Six, shall an ordinance entitled 2025 Amendments to the zoning ordinance of the town of Pownell, Maine regarding Section 400 be enacted?
On page 61, this is a minor change, 61, line 3, I mean, item 3, line 2, the word towns needs a apostrophe.
Can you repeat that, Marcia?
Page 61, item 3.
Gotcha.
Towns should have a possessive apostrophe.
So this page corresponds to, you know, to a further article down, so these are all sectioned out into five different articles, so just to try to stay back on track a little bit.
Oh, is.
Yeah, so we're on definitions right now, which we just.
Oh, you're still on definitions?
Well, that was the second one, so.
Okay.
Let's just make that correction.
Yes, yep, yep, I do have it, so.
Okay, so I'm going to stop. You're doing good.
2025 Amendments to the zoning ordinance of the town of Pownell, Maine regarding Section 504, be enacted. Those who are going to be available with the exception of the town's office, it will be available at the town meeting. A.
It's just a typographical, under paid, under C, rural district, special exemptions, number 3. If we could indent those so they would be lined up with the ones below them, I'd be happy.
Article 8, shall ordinance entitled 2025 Amendments to the zoning ordinance of the town of Pownell, Maine regarding Section 603 backlog be enacted. Shall ordinance entitled 605 be enacted with the exception of the town's office? Is this a town meeting? Is this okay? Okay. Article 10, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate 156,000 to the capital project fund?
Each year, the Capital Asset Planning Committee recommends an amount for the reserve account for future capital expenditures. With the unassigned fund money transfers in the last two years, it has helped keep the requests steady. Angels.
Article 11, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate $708,245 for general government budget, but if elected, $672,000, $99,000, select board recommending $708,245.
Oh, fix that, you want this on here?
The general government budget is up 26% this year. The biggest drivers are increases in technology and the realignment of department head wages to reflect current labor market trends. The budget committee and the select board recommendations differ because the select board were still in salary negotiations following the evaluation process when the budget committee voted on their recommendations.
Article 13, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate $12,000 for community services below budget committee recommending, select board 12,000.
This budget covers our partnership with Freeport Community Services and our required general assistance. There is no increase in this budget from last year.
The town vote to raise and appropriate $44,700 for Mallet Hall, break down below budget committee recommending, select board 44,700.
Included in this budget is the painting of the north side of Mallet Hall. The budget is down 9%, mostly driven by a better estimated cost for painting the north side of the building.
Article 14, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate $233,851 for public safety below budget committee recommending, select board 233,851.
See the fire chief's note. The 2026 fire and rescue budget has some significant increases this year, so I wanted to send along this document with some explanations for some of the larger increases. Freeport for EMS transfer services increased to 40,000. Under the administration tab, you'll notice an increase to membership dues. This increase was largely driven by an increase to coastal mutual aid and a few other memberships. You should also notice a decrease to the computer line. This is due to us starting to switch over to the state's free software as opposed to paying for a third-party software. I have added a cellphone stipend as well as a department head. I use my cellphone multiple times daily for fire department business. Under compensation, I have asked for an increase to the officer's stipends for COLA and a job well done. The select board has asked me to put in 20,000 as a placeholder for the chief's position. I have also requested an increase to maintenance and training pay lines due to a more robust roster turning out. I have also asked for an increase to call pay as well. This is due to several factors. One being the need to implement, implement a night differential pay system for nighttime turnout. Also, the increase to the minimum wage is a driver to all of these increases. In buildings, there are adjustments to utilities based on current trends. Nothing major here. In operations, we will see some large increases. In Engine 2's maintenance line, you'll notice an increase of $10,000. This is due to the pump packing leaking, and it is beyond adjustment. This means that the lower half of the pump needs to be rebuilt. This issue was discovered this year during annual pump testing. Another big item is under hose and ladder testing. This is mostly driven by Main Bureau of Labor Standards. They are now requiring us to pressure test our forestry hose as well as our fire attack hose. This is a new mandate. We are also requesting an increase to our fire gear line. We have several new members that need up-to-date gear. We need to replace one of our four gas meters as well. And under medical supplies, we are requesting an increase to start replacing our aging AEDs. They are no longer serviceable once they break down. And finally, under new hose and fittings, we are requesting funds to purchase a second blitzfire nozzle. This is a special nozzle capable of flowing up to 500 gallons a minute with limited staffing, staffing needed to deploy. We determined that we could have used a second one at the Merrill Road burn fire a couple of years ago. Respectfully submitted, Chief Peters.
The thought that that will actually be read at the town meeting?
It will be handed out to everyone, yeah. Or it will be in available. Yes, I would think the chief would.
Article 16, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate $1,001,833 for public works, break down below. Just a reminder, we're moving the phone, not to break down. Budget committee recommending to the select board, $1,001,833.
The public works budget has a 6% increase, mostly driven by facilities, maintenance, and compensation. Per our recent inspection through our property and casualty insurance company, we need to have a structural engineer inspect the sand salt shed for structural deficiencies. The select board has realigned the road commissioner's salary with current labor market trends.
Article 17, shall the town vote to raise and appropriate $172,562 for solid waste, budget committee recommending, select board, two of the select board, $262,341, and the select board is recommending approval.
The solid waste budget is up 43%. Echo Maine tipping fees have increased by 31%, and the town is producing more waste and recycling. The yearly contract has a 5% increase as outlined in the contract.
Did you say 43%?
Yes.
Hi, Bo, I will fix that, it should be 13.
You mean to say the town vote to raise and appropriate $57,000 for Pownell Center Water Association, budget committee recommending, select board, $1,000, select board is recommending approval.
The Pownell Center Water Association budget has a 54% increase. The two factors are increased insurance costs and costs for fuel for the newly installed standby generator.
You can see the town vote to raise and appropriate $8,500 for the area, budget committee recommending, $8,500.
The cemetery, the cemetery budget has a 42% increase, mostly in payroll, as they now have a full crew completing the work that is necessary in maintaining the cemeteries.
You can see the town vote to raise $2,341 for debt service and other obligations, break down there, budget committee recommending, select board, two of the select board, $262,341, and the select board is recommending approval.
The debt service budget is down 6%. As we pay down our bonding, the interest reduces. The bond bank also did an audit this year, and through this practice, they were able to pass along interest savings for the remainder of one of our bonds.
You can see the town vote to raise and appropriate $500 for recreation facility tent construction. Budget committee recommending, select board, $500, select board is recommending approval.
There is no increase in the recreation budget over the previous year.
Article 22, shall the town transfer from the unassigned bond balance and appropriate up to $455,000, $455,000, to the future facilities committee for the following project, design and complete construction contract documents for future co-located fire station and public works facility. Select board is recommending approval.
Yeah, I've got to edit the narratives on that one because we, we changed it from one to three articles, so the narratives won't line up number-wise as we.
Yep.
I'll fix that.
So I'm not going to read the whole Exhibit B, because it's seven pages long. Well, I can.
Twenty-three, shall the town transfer to the public works impact, from the public works impact fee bond balance and appropriate $30,000 to the future facilities committee for the following project, design and complete construction contract documents for future co-located fire station and public works facility. Select board is recommending approval. Article 14, shall the town transfer from public safety impact fee balance, fee bond balance, and appropriate $15,000 to the future facilities committee for the following project, design and complete construction contract documents for the future co-located fire station and public works facility.
I only have one question, whether we're shooting ourselves if we don't include the proposed in the articles. The assumption is that this is the, you just said the future, and you are eliminating both.
So I talked to the town attorney about that, and he was concerned it might confuse people that you're voting on the two things at the same time by including the full cost in the warrant article. So his suggestion was to have it in an exhibit. That was what he suggested when, when I reached out back when we discussed this about a month ago. So the town attorney was confused, or thought it might be confusing to people if we included the full cost of the project in the warrant article that he felt people might think you're voting on both that project and the impact, or that was his only.
Question, that question, after the word proposed.
Okay.
When you say resign and complete construction contract documents for the future co-located.
Gotcha. Propose, yep. Yep.
Take away, how the bill is voted on, you don't want, from my perspective, you don't want to rile people. Does the word proposed, though, imply that you're proposing this right now? What if you say, for the, for the future co-located fire station, public works facility under consideration? I just, yeah, I'm open to any edit, just think we're careful enough that we don't create the hatches, people that it's going to be a new, a new experience, even actually where they like dollars that haven't had sales.
Well, what I can say is, take up our two, three, it's true, David, this is only voting for the design and complete construction document, not voting for the product itself.
We need to clarify, but even the insinuation of these articles setting this on light, the general direction towards building a facility that the town, government, yes, go.
Do you say pending vote?
Better, you want to give the town people the idea that they will have a vote on the whole thing. This assumes from the wording that this is done, how we're now designing.
How about for a proposed future co-located fire station and public works facility?
So I find with the word proposed, I'm wondering if, taking off what Kate said, too, to just say for a proposed future collated fire station and public works facility, and the town that will be voted on in a future town meeting, or something to the effect that says the town is going to get to vote on that piece, too. I, I don't know, like, the wording is probably not, I'd have to think about it a little bit more, but I think by adding that sort of piece that says there's going to be another vote on the actual building of this $5.6 million building. Come up with something in the morning with a little bit fresher mind, but I think adding in that piece to either, yeah, to that, and it is in the exhibit that, you know, the future of it is this amount of money, too, but to have it a little bit more forward-facing in the warrant. That would, that would be my suggestion, adding the word proposed and then making some sort of better, better grammar and wording to refer to a secondary or future town meeting votes for the final project. Be approved by a future town meeting vote, final project or something. Remember that when I come see you in the morning.
Please be clear that this needs to happen for this project forward, but how you approve this action, but also need to approve every subsequent action.
How about I add a couple of sentences in the narrative besides just seeing Exhibit B to just highlight, like, this is step one, that there will be future town meeting votes for every step of this process, including approving the actual build, or something to that effect, too. So we have that couple of front-facing sentences in the narrative.
If you're going to add it to the narrative, add that this allows us to go for granting, to apply for grants, to lessen the burden, too.
I guess, I thought, we can say the select board recommends approval, we can say, recommends approval, noting that any, you know, that.
All steps in the process will require a town meeting vote. I'm okay with that. I think add the word proposed in the actual article because it, it does insinuate that that's been voted on when you hear it out loud again, and then add the select board recommends approval, and then language to the effect that every step in the process will be a town meeting vote for this project or something.
How about I add a couple of sentences in the narrative besides just seeing exhibit B to just highlight like this is step one that there will be future town meeting votes for every step of this process, including approving. The actual build or something to that effect too, so we have that couple of front facing sentences in the narrative.
If you're going to add it to the narrative, add that this allows us to go for granting. To apply for grants. To lessen the burden too.
We can say the select board recommends approval. We can say it recommends approval noting that any. You know, that that.
All steps in the process will require a town meeting vote. I'm okay with that. I think add the word proposed in the actual article because it it does insinuate that that's been voted on when you hear it out loud again. And then add the select board recommends approval and then language to the effect that every step in the process. Will be a town meeting vote for this project or something, I I think that's fine.
Okay, yeah, that'll work.
Is this to be added to articles twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-four?
That's correct. Yeah, I'm good.
Article twenty-five, to see if the town will vote, to see if the town will raise and appropriate.
External consultant to support further town center visioning. The committee will look to contract. Yeah, I don't think we can put in, we will look to contract with a certain consultant because that will have to go to RFP. Over twenty thousand, over ten thousand dollars. With with a consultant, with a consultant to help work alongside the committee to develop a clear path to success. Balance against the findings from the two thousand twenty-three town visioning session and the GP cog report.
Twenty-six, to see if the town will vote. See if the town will raise and appropriate sixty thousand dollars.
We are due for a revaluation and have put out an RFP. This article is putting money aside towards the cost.
In that terms, I think we need to say what our.
And have put out a request for proposals. Okay.
Seven, to see if to see if the town will appropriate seven thousand dollars in coronavirus local fiscal recovery funds. AKA American Rescue Plan or Arco funds seen by the town from the federal government for the following project, repair the three dormers.
The three dormers at Mallet Hall need to be repaired. This is American Rescue Plan money that was allocated for the office renovation but not spent. This article asks the town to spend the money towards the dormer repairs.
Kathy Hoag, instead of saying not spent, wasn't that it wasn't spent on that, it was, but not all of it, right?
So not. Yeah, it's the leftover money that didn't get.
But that didn't seem clear, right?
Not fully expended.
Whatever the word is.
Don't believe so.
Three total.
Yeah.
Twenty-eight, to see if the town will raise and appropriate twenty-three thousand dollars for the following project, repair the three dormers at Mallet Hall.
This article is funding the difference in dormer repairs.
See if the town will vote to accept and apply seven hundred forty-one thousand for following non-property tax revenues to lose the total amount of taxes raised by taxes. And to see if the town will vote to authorize the select board and town predator to accept any digital revenue on any other state, federal, local, private. Quarter down, maybe use a boost amount required to be period of taxation.
These are the revenues that we anticipate to receive. These are based on projections and past trends.
Twenty-two, to see if the town will vote unassigned fund balance for being up to three hundred thousand dollars to minimize tax.
This is a transfer from the unassigned fund balance, often referred to as surplus or undesignedated funds, to help minimize the mill rate increase. The select board has done this for previous years.
Public Center of Water District. Operating funds at the end of two thousand, this will year two thousand, this will year twenty-six. To the P C W A reserve.
This allows the transfer of any unexpended funds to go into the Pownell Center Water Association sinking fund. The fund stands at eleven thousand, two hundred and sixty-four dollars and eighty-six cents with a goal of twenty thousand. The purpose of this fund is to have money available in the event of an emergency to keep the Pownell Center Water Association fun functioning.
Thirty-two, to see if the town will vote to set September fifteen, two thousand twenty-five, December fifteen, two thousand twenty-five, March fifteen, two thousand twenty-six, June fifteen, two thousand twenty-six. As the date on which one quarter of taxes shall be due and payable and are charged interest at the rate of seven and a half percent for man on a computer on a yearly basis. On any portion of the installment due. As of September sixteen, two thousand twenty-five, December sixteen, two thousand twenty-five, March sixteen, two thousand twenty-six, June sixteen, two thousand twenty-six. Two, to see if the town will permit the tax collector or their designated to waive unintentional tax. Interest payment shortages in the amount not to exceed five dollars. And to see if free agency, the town will vote to authorize a tax collector to accept payment from municipal property taxes not yet due or assigned for someone to thirty-six M R S A section five oh six. And does not apply interest to certain collections.
This sets sets the tax payment due dates, late payment interest dates, allows the tax collector to collect taxes on years not yet assessed. And allows the tax collector to write off any unintentional unintentional interest up to five dollars.
Thirty-three, to see if the town will vote to set three and a half percent as the rate to be paid by the town. On the baited taxes for someone to thirty-six M R S A section five oh six dash ten. And to. And to authorize interest paid in our basement's grant to be appropriated from overlay funds or if necessary, the unassigned fund balance. Select board is recommending approval.
We are required by law and statute to set an interest rate on abated taxes. This article allows the select board to transfer up to three percent between expenditure lines within the same budget.
Just a quick comment though, should we just add that this is really an accounting tool, something, because I mean, it's just really repeating the article, so. That is just an accounting tool.
Yeah. The balance out their budget. This gives the select board authority to approve carry forward requests from department heads and or committees. These requests are always presented at the first select board meeting in July and must either have a signed contract, purchase order, or fiduciary. Fiduciary obligation to fulfill.
Six, to see if the town will vote to authorize the select board to town treasurer on behalf of the town to accept any gifts, unanticipated donations or fast food funds that may be provided by individuals, business associations, charitable groups or other organizations. Who have not been, which have not been listed in any of the previous articles. The select board determines that the gifts, donations, or fast food funds and the purposes are in the best interest of the town. And expense such funds for their intended purpose.
This allows the treasurer and select board to accept any unexpected monies.
Article thirty-seven, to see if the town will vote to authorize the select board or their designated. To see, accept dispersed grant funds to private county, state, or federal agencies for a purpose still designated in each specific grant and execute any document. Documents related to such credits.
This allows the select board or their designated to seek out and carry out grants. This appropriates money to the two local snowmobile clubs for the upkeep of trails. The money is collected through snowmobile registrations.
I they'll probably be signing it on May twelfth, but we haven't filled that in yet because we're still on draft.
An extra T H in here.
Where, Kathy?
Tim Giddon, minor, upper minor. Might it be wise on the dormer to put the larger request first? That way, if the larger request doesn't pass, then you're not tying up the funds for the smaller request.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. Good idea.
Kathy, did you have a question back on articles somewhere at the very beginning, you pointed to something.
I'm missing. Right here. Quotation.
Okay, thank you.
It's frightening, Sandy Schuman. Hodgson Road, thank you. I needed that. I just wanted to know, and if I missed this before I came. If we pass everything that's in this, do you know how that will affect taxes? So when we get to town meeting, we will have that. I thought you did that last year.
Recognition that we're doing this year.
Well, thank you.
As close as we can get. We've got some variables this year that we never had. One of them is that they made power really right deals. That's their property, they're the largest tax. We will give a all marks fingers.
Okay, thank you. Thank you.
Marcia Bowen, on article twenty-three, I just wrote down possible wording. The sec select board recommends approval noting that any future expenditures will require town approval. Justin.
Any suggestions, I see you are welcome.
I like that.
Oh, thank you. Well done. Thank you, Mandy. Was that really helpful? I'm not quite sure what time it is, can we just roll right into our meeting?
Six fifteen.
Six sixteen, I did say the regular select board meeting would start at the conclusion of public hearings.
Five in a break. I'd like to call the regular select board meeting to order, April twenty eighth, two thousand twenty-five. As an off base, if you're able to stand for first allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Next item on the agenda is the AP warrant fiscal year twenty-five. Number twenty-three in the amount of three hundred and thirty thousand, one hundred and fifty-three dollars and sixty-one cents.
I will move that we pay AP warrant number twenty-three in the amount of three hundred and thirty thousand, one hundred and fifty-three dollars and sixty-one cents.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded to pay AP warrant number twenty-five in the amount of twenty, number twenty-three, the amount of three hundred and thirty thousand, one hundred and fifty-three dollars and sixty-one cents. Is there any discussion? Seeing not all in favor, motion carries. Next item on the agenda is payroll journal, number four-ten, in the amount of eleven thousand, eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars and eighty-one cents.
I will move that we pay payroll journal number four-ten in the amount of eleven thousand, eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars and eighty-one cents.
Been moved and seconded to pay payroll journal number four-ten, the amount of eleven thousand, eight hundred and seventy-nine dollars and eighty-one cents. Is there any further discussion? Seeing not all in favor, the motion carries. Next item on the agenda is the minutes of the previous meeting, that's the minutes of April fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five, remarkably recorded by Kathleen Hoag.
I will, excuse me, I will move that we pay, uh, pay, yeah, that we approve the April fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five public hearing and regular meeting minutes. Most ably done by Kathy Hoag.
I second.
Moving seconded to approve the minutes of April fourteenth, two thousand twenty-five public hearing, regular meeting, is there any further discussion? Seeing not all in favor, motion carries. Thank you, Kathy. Next item on the agenda is public comment on non-agenda items. This is an opportunity for any resident of the town of Pownell, step forward and be heard by the select board. Is there anybody? Step forward, please get your name and address.
Hello, Heidi Richards, Minut Road. I just, I wasn't sure if this was the most appropriate time to ask some questions on this policy versus ordinance. Just because it's not specific to one policy or ordinance, is this okay time?
Sure time.
Okay. So I, because there's a policy that is being proposed that has to do with, has an impact on what we do on our property. I guess I just had questions because to me, an ordinance feels very clear of the process, the the process in which an ordinance is created, language can be adjusted. When when a language can and can't be adjusted. And how, I know at the last meeting, we were all debating, like, should an S be added here on an ordinance? And my understanding is that a policy can be changed at any time by the select board. I don't know if it can also be changed by the CEO as well, or if it's just the select board. So I guess I have a couple of questions here and I'm just hoping that somebody could educate me a little bit. So. It, what is the process for language being changed? Is it similar to an ordinance or is that, is it a different process?
I guess I'd need to ask you what your understanding of policy and ordinance is because we're not going to go anywhere.
Okay. Yeah. Okay, so my understanding of an ordinance is. Okay, so my understanding of an ordinance is that once, well, both, I feel that both are probably legal documents or legal pieces of writing, and, but my understanding of an ordinance is that in order to change any language on it, it needs to, there needs to be a public hearing, it needs to be voted on once a year at town meeting, and if somebody was to appeal, if an ordinance was put in place and somebody felt that there was, the ordinance wasn't matching something that they thought they had, I don't know how to word this, a right to or access to, or the ordinance prevent, this is probably better. If the ordinance prevented them from doing what they were hoping to do, and they were told that they could appeal, set, put in an appeal for the ordinance, or maybe that's, I know in the CEO process, if something, if you want to apply for a permit for something and you're said, told no, then you can appeal it, and then there's a public appeals process. So I guess I'm wondering, is there similar processes for a policy from, for the townspeople to have the ability to suggest language change, know when language change is being done? Is there a public hearing for language change? Like, what's the process for people being alerted to a change in the wording? What's the process for the public to, if they're told no, or that they're, they don't make the, that they can't register because of X, Y, or Z, that they have the ability to appeal that if, if they feel they would like to? So it's more procedural stuff.
Brad, would you like to give definition of an ordinance?
An ordinance is a legal ordinance of the town. It's voted on by the town body, the legislative body of the town, and the only way that can ever be changed is to go before the legislative body of the town at a town meeting to change that.
Yes, that's my understanding.
With.
So you understand what an ordinance is?
Yes.
With a policy, you can come to the select board and say, you know, I really think this section of this policy is unfair. Can we consider doing something different like this, which the select board will consider and vote upon?
And can the select board make those changes without the public being aware? Because the ordinance process, it's.
We still have to post a agenda.
Yeah.
It has to be on the agenda.
Okay.
So all our meetings have to be publicized beforehand.
Yeah. And what's the, is there an appeals process?
I.
What, what, I'm not quite sure what you mean by appeals process.
Well.
Give you an example.
Yeah. So because this, the potential policy that's being presented has a checklist of items, because of that, somebody could potentially be told they're not able to operate in a way that they were hoping to. And so if that is the case, and they wanted to appeal that and say, I don't agree with this decision, how would they be able to do that? Because with an ordinance, you, we have that process through the CEO process. So that's, that's more of what I'm asking. It's not.
You would appeal directly to the select board.
Okay.
You did not appreciate the select board's decision. In this particular instance, you would go to the Board of Appeals and appeal a select board decision. You say, I disagree with the select board's interpretation.
I don't think you can.
I think the Board of Appeals only oversees CEO decision appeals, so.
Who is, who is administering the check?
See, the CEOs, right?
So the Board of Appeals is the sole entity.
Mm-hmm.
So.
True.
It's only that, and anything else that's mentioned in the ordinance. It's not, my understanding is that the Board of Appeals is available to any CEO decision.
That's my understanding as well, that the only, yeah.
Your admission of anything on a policy, CEO administers.
Okay. Is that clear somewhere on our website, or just so, it just feels like this is new, this process? So I just was wondering if there's a way for people who move to town, or if there's, this, I'm just asking for general, for people to understand what they have, what might come up and what they might be able to do for, you know, I don't know, I'm just asking for any specific thing, because this is different, right? We usually do things through ordinances, and the, I'm not necessarily saying this is a bad thing, I'm just asking, how do we prepare for the future? Part of my job is to try to think of every what-if, like, my day job is to try to think of every what-if and create a plan for it so that we're prepared when that question or situation comes up. And I'm trying to help have a conversation to, for us to prepare as a town when, when, when it does come up, because it will probably eventually happen where somebody is told no, and they're upset, and then they're going to want to understand what their rights are.
I, I, I think the reasoning behind us going with a policy is that an ordinance would be so stringent, we have flexibility with a policy to be able to work with you rather than, that's it.
Yeah. I mean.
Sorry to wait you.
I get that, and I, I really respect everyone in this room and everyone that, this, the people in this room in particular have done an incredible amount for this town, and I trust everyone in this room, but this document's going to be around for a really long time, and people change in their roles and who has power in positions, and I just really think that people who live here should know what the processes are clearly so that they know what they, what their rights are and what they, what can happen for them in the future. So that's more of why I'm asking these questions. Let me just, I just want to see if I asked everything. So you said the ordinance is a legal document. Is this considered a legal document as well?
Still a legal document of the town.
Do you feel that it would be helpful to have it clearly stated somewhere to, like, the difference between a policy and an ordinance and how it could be, I don't know, I'm just, this is just question, right? I don't, I'm just trying to create conversation.
Sure, I understand your question.
Well, it's, I guess it's, even though I, I get the answers that have been provided, it still feels a little gray of, because even our CEO was unclear of that he had the ability to, you know, to navigate an appeal if somebody was to appeal a policy. So that's where it still feels a little gray.
Okay, so I'm going to be as clear as I can be, right? We have decided to go with a policy so that we can register short-term rentals. Now, I realize that feels like an imposition to many people who have short-term rentals. The town is faced with providing a, a safety issue for the fire and rescue committee, and there is no way that we're going to move forward in this town if something happens to one of these short-term rentals that are not registered. So the select board decided the policy was the less intrusive way to make sure that we know where these places are. There's, the regulations that are listed in that checklist are, are as simple as would be made, that you need to have those to be able to live in any place. You can't, you can't rent a tent.
I, I agree with all of that, and I'm not.
So, I, I listen to you, I expect you to be polite and listen to me, okay? If anybody wants to write an ordinance and bring it before the town meeting, you're more than welcome to write it up. Right now, we are just trying to get a handle on how many short-term rentals are in the town, okay? That's why we have a policy. We don't want to impose upon anybody's right to do what they want to do with their property as long as they do it in a safe manner.
And I, I guess I realize all that, and I, that's why I tried not to bring this up specifically for that policy. I'm more just asking about policy versus ordinance and understanding those procedures. Thank you.
Go ahead, Kate.
I think, I don't know if this is helpful, but I think what we're trying to create is essentially a registration policy rather than something more like a law, so that we, it's just a matter of keeping track.
May I come back up?
Sure.
I guess I had these two questions for later on when the policy was actually brought up, and the, but, well, I guess I was wondering if, when that actually happens, well, actually, I'm going to pause and wait on that. The, I've registered for, as a business here, and when I've done that, I've just paid the fee, and then they said, thank you and good luck. And so this feels a little different than that because there is a checklist associated that you could get a yes or no for, and so that's where it feels a little different than just a registration. But I understand that's what the town is trying to do, is to just have people get registered so you're aware of where they are, and I do think that's needed and appreciate, and is, you know, is good.
So I hope, Heidi, I hope you've heard me say that if the, the residents of the town who own short-term rentals are, you know, are, want to have an ordinance that controls short-term rental usage, they're more than welcome to take the time to write up that language and bring it in front of the, the town meeting. I mean, that's how this town operates. So I'm just, there's no restriction on creating an ordinance if that's what you want. The select board has decided that it doesn't need an ordinance, just needs a way to, it's like, we register male, neutered, unneutered, and female dogs, register cars, we register home occupations. There it could be. Okay, is there any other person who'd like to step forward and be heard? Seeing none, department head reports. Department head reports can be viewed on the website. Click on the department, and the head of the department has written up a report. Are there any questions from the select board for the department heads that are here?
I have none.
Why? Is there any report from the select board at this time?
I have nothing to report.
No.
Okay. Under new business, annual town meeting warrant edits, if any.
Well, we have a few. That's mostly if we have to add or change numbers or all that. So I think we've identified everything, and I will come back with a hopefully completed document on May twelfth.
Questions for?
Do you need to just motion the edits we discussed in the public hearing just for?
I, I will move that we move forward with the edits that were identified in the public hearing.
I second.
Moving seconded to move forward with the edited, edits identified at the public hearing. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none all in favor, motion carries. Next item is the R, is the request for proposal, legal services. Becky.
I reached out, many towns are in this position, got a lot of different drafts. The one that stood out was, was from another town that said, I went simpler in hopes to get better responses, and I just really sort of plagiarized his by changing it. So, you know, some of the RFPs were seven and eight pages long, I didn't feel the need. So this is the one that I drafted to put out for the next two weeks for legal services so we can move forward.
I say we move forward with it, and I will move that we move forward with the request for proposals for legal services.
Second.
Moving seconded to approve the request for proposal for legal services. Any further discussion? Seeing none all in favor, motion carries. Next item on the agenda, short-term rental policy.
So after the last meeting, we inserted some language, so I started with some language, and I sent it to both code enforcement officers, and then they looked at the language, and the document you have in front of you with the red is the newly proposed language, which puts in that thirty-day timeframe for the inspections to get done upon an application being submitted, and then, and, and if Tim wants to speak a little bit more to this and talking about the registration, there was a lot of comments about if we already have a certificate of occupancy, do we need to go through this? And just because this is the first year and the first time, the language is written to just get everybody, you know, in this first time, and then moving forward, if you check no changes, it's a pretty simple reregistration process.
Kim, I really like this change.
So the change as far as inspections, my thought is that, you know, if we do it for one, we should do it for all. So anybody that is new to registering is going to be inspected the first time, and there's no changes, you don't have to do it again?
And anyone that's already been inspected doesn't have to be inspected again?
Using the, this, this policy, yes.
As long as no changes have been made to the dwelling.
So everybody that comes and registers, signs up, they're going to get inspected. And then, you know, if there's no changes going forward, then they don't have to worry about it until they do so.
Thank you. So that's one change, and the thirty days, which is a change, is there any other changes at all? Let's just go through this since the. Andy, is there anything that you feel is onerous on this to a property owner? The checklist seems to be fairly simple.
It's, basically, the checklist is, other than the first four question, first four checked items on the list, you would need for a certificate of occupancy of any building You know, an evacuation plan is a great idea for someone who isn't familiar with the building. It's required in every commercial building that I'm aware of. The parking and fire extinguisher. And the street number is huge for finding it. So, yeah, I, I think this covers everything that we're concerned about as far as the safety of it.
Thank you, Andy. Kate?
I don't think I have anything to add to this, or any questions.
Okay, so we. Okay, so we have presented, um, this with amendments. So I'm going to suggest we table it one more time, but the people in the town can read the amended version and then we'll follow in our next meeting. Does that feel fair to the board?
I just, um, had two more questions, but first I wanted to say thank you for hearing my questions, concerns, and suggestions last meeting. Um, but I just was wondering, I did not see a fee for applying to, or registering rather on there. And I believe there's usually a fee listed on different registrations. So I wasn't sure if that was something that needs to be included or has been discussed. And then the other part was if you register for, um, a short-term rental, do you also have to register as a business as well? So those two things just weren't clear to me. Thank you.
Registering as a short-term rental implies that you're registering as a business. Kind of the point. If you document to the town that you're in the business of short-term rental, then it's a business application. Did we even discuss fees?
No, but we usually go through the fee schedule in July, so that July or August and then make changes to it.
So our thought was that we weren't going to put a fee on this, um, Bill and I, um, just to get people in and do it. If it doesn't cost anything, people might be more willing to do it. That and the fact that I do not believe there are fees associated with any policy in town. I could be wrong, other than maybe the mallet hall rental.
Car registration. But there's no need to attach a fee if there is no.
Except there is statute for business registration of $20. So if we're qualifying this as in lieu of a business registration, then there probably should be a $20 fee. But if they've already paid that or showed evidence, I don't think they should have to pay that again on the first time. That would be my thought.
I agree. Can I mean? Go ahead.
I'm Marcia Bowen. I'm a former Airbnb host, but no longer. So I have clarifying questions um, that I think have been answered, but I want to be sure. Um, so for an older home that has a certificate of occupancy that's fairly old, um, I'm wondering about the process because say we have a four-person occupancy permit, what happens next? Um, I go, I go through the check, I go to the CEO and get the checklist approved, which seemed to me, I just looked at it, seemed fairly straightforward. So, and not onerous. Um, how does it work? If you have a four-person occupancy, but, and you've got two people living there, how do you figure out what's allowable for your Airbnb? Is it based just on bedrooms or is it based on you get two extra people because you, you only have two people living there? How does that all work?
So a lot of those requirements are based on the septic system and how many bedrooms there are. And if there's a kitchen involved, it's more, it's counted as more than just a bedroom. There's more gallons per day than just a bedroom. So we have to make sure the septic system is big enough to handle, um, the unit. Um, and also it's just, you know, the, the check is there just to make sure everything is the same as everybody else has, has to do. So.
Okay. And so is there higher math involved if you, you have two people living there full-time, but then you have two people coming in a certain 10 days a year? You don't do, you don't go there.
I don't.
You just assume that there's a bedroom and it could house.
Right. It, it depends on the number of bedrooms in the house. So if you have a three-bedroom home and it, and you know, and you have a, uh, three, um, a septic system good for three bedrooms, then you're covered for anything. But if you add another kitchen to your home, then it adds another 20,000 gallons, or, you know, 20,000 gallons a day. So you need a little, we need to make sure your septic system is big enough to handle that. Um, but if it's just, you know, somebody staying in a bedroom, then it just counts as a bedroom.
Okay. So it doesn't matter how old your certificate of occupancy is because you're going through the inspection and the checklist and everything should be copacetic based on your septic.
Yes.
Capacity. Okay, thanks. One more thing.
Sure.
I, I, I agree with Heidi and that somewhere a definition of ordinance and policy would be helpful, um, so that we have that understanding.
Okay, so changes have been made. They've been aired at a public meeting. Will we table this or till the next meeting so it's public, it's a chance to look at these new and then we'll vote on it next meeting?
Sounds good.
Does that mean you second that?
I will second that.
It's been moved and seconded. Kate, any discussion?
Um, so are we including a one-time fee or not?
Great question. Thank you. I knew I'd ask you. So we'll include a $20 business fee. Just make it even for everything else, right?
Yep, it's a standard even if someone was coming into register.
Perfect. With that addition, Andy, do you still agree?
I still agree and still second.
All in favor? We'll take it up next. Thank you, Tim, for that clarification.
Is that a one-time fee or is that a every time, a yearly reapplication fee?
So the business registration is a one-time fee. That's, so if someone's doing.
It's a one-time.
One-time fee.
Yeah.
Okay.
Good, okay. Who, Andy?
Oh, that's Tim.
Um, here we go. This should be fun. Next item on the agenda is Casella, summer pickup time. I, I can't wait.
I got an, I got an email, um, from our rep. Operations have asked for the summer months and they were not clear what constitutes the summer months if they could start trash pickup at 6:00 AM. So the Solid Waste looked at our, our contract and our contract actually says pickup does start at 6:00 AM, but they usually don't start till 7:00. So I said I had to bring it before the board for a discussion as far as, um, what we want to do. I'm concerned it will be confusing to people and we'll have a lot of missed pickups and a lot of phone calls and a lot of, you know, for going back and forth each year. They gave no reason why they wanted to start an hour early. Other than maybe it's the heat.
Get out earlier.
Maybe it's to get out earlier or maybe because of the heat to try to get done earlier in the day. I'm not really sure, but it was just a request from them.
Frank, we're compelled by the contract.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Well, we do, we do need to make sure we alert you know, the town. It's going to happen.
I believe it does say in our Solid Waste ordinance online that trash should be out by 6:00 AM. Um, so we'll just need to start getting that out in our monthly email and the quarterly newsletter that will be coming out in June. So that timing is kind of good. And maybe I can negotiate a little bit with Casella about a start time so we can get the word out.
Did they give you any indication of what the start time?
No, nothing. The, the sentence was, can we start an hour early? And that was the email I got. Request from operations and there was just no context to the request. I'll find out.
Did they ever ask if they could start an hour late?
Nope.
Okay, so we'll do our best to try to let people know, you know, getting up early in the summer is healthy. Next item on the agenda is property valuation factor tax year. Becky?
So as Donna was working on the documents to send into the state for our ratio certification, the state came back and asked for um, a document supporting the 30% um, factoring that we're doing this year in the tax rate. So the board just needs to have a discussion in the minutes and a motion so she can send that in.
Could you just describe for the public your understanding what factoring is?
Sure. Factoring is making, um, a, an adjustment based on current trends to your valuation for the tax purposes. So how we figure your tax bill is the mill rate, the dollar amount that we come up with after town meeting times your evaluation per thousand. And that gives you your tax bill. We are required by state law to stay above a certain percentage and we fell below that again this year as we're working towards reevaluation. Uh, so in order to get back to 77% to keep us, um, in compliance with state law, um, the board has to consider a factoring of 30% towards valuation.
Reason why the valuation equation is so low is because.
We are 10 years, coming on 10 years past our revaluation. So typically towns do it every 10 years and the market changed dramatically also five years ago, as most everybody in this room probably understands. Um, so that has really resulted in um, a lot of changes in, in equity and valuation. So as we move towards a reevaluation to get everyone in line, we're trying to stay in compliance with state law. Plus it affects your homestead. So if you have a homestead too, every time our percentage goes down, that's less that's coming off your total evaluation, your evaluation.
Plus it affects our assessment of our largest properties such as CMP and energy.
And it affects the rev sharing that we receive. So it, it kind of sort of goes everywhere and affects several different things that, that actually support the town as well.
So would you think this would qualify? Maybe we should ask the public if they have any questions.
Absolutely.
Any questions about factoring another 33% increase?
I believe it's 30.
3% for your property valuation in lieu of a revaluation for the share. It'll affect in some way your profit tax bill. Currently, the median sales price for a home and median is a funny word, but it is $710,000. And I bought my house for $43,000.
You didn't know how rich you were, did you?
So that's why we're doing it, having this conversation to, to allow the state to recognize the test. Do we need to move to?
I think it would probably be clear to just have a motion.
Yeah, I will move that we set our property valuation factor for the tax year of 2026 at 30%.
Seconded. Any further discussion? Questions from the public? All in favor? She carries. Is there any other new business? Is there any old business?
I believe so.
Um, we're all set for the town meeting? At the school, there's been no change?
No change as of this day.
There is a rumor out there that the contractor has changed again. So.
I'll read it.
Put in the alternate site, so.
That's recommended by Maine Towny City Clerks Association to have a secondary site. Makes sense.
Okay, is there any correspondence from the board?
No.
Wow. Is there any other business?
I have none.
Do you want to report out the conversation that we had in our meeting with the CEOs and North Star?
Sure.
Is that something that should be recorded?
Sure. So to just, um, preface, our town planner submitted his resignation and that was effective April 23rd. So we, um, we, meeting the select board, the two CEOs, myself and Ben Smith from North Star met last week to discuss um, working with them again for support with the town. It had a really great meeting. Um, we discussed that, um, they would show us some, some port at the beginning as we're doing some transition in the office with who's going to manage um, applications for subdivisions coming in, what their presence might be at a planning board meeting, um, their work with CEO on ordinances and sort of working on a plan for that and just kind of starting to lay some groundwork as we move into this next phase of, um, town planning and supporting the planning board and the office staff with subdivision and ordinance rewrites. Uh, very positive open meeting. I think we came out with a really good plan forward, um, and we will be seeing a contract from them um, in June, effective July 1, after town meeting vote, budget passes.
And I had a very positive email from the chairman of the planning board uh, who did an excellent job delegating responsibilities to each member of the planning board. I'm interested to see how that that will work out. Um, felt like a fairly good way to share the burden. So I think the town is responding to the planner's resignation and hopefully we'll land on our feet and, and with North Star's help, keep moving forward. So without any further ado, I would like to move that we go into executive session for personnel. Thank you very much for attending. Any questions and being interested in the town? Good to see you.